... 5 of the United States of America, in the true republic of which stands one nation, one ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome everybody to the December 5th work session 9:30 a.m. I will ask trustee Pell, our secretary treasurer, to call the roll.
Scott Harwitz, president.
Here.
William R. Pell, secretary treasurer, here. Edward J. Warner.
Present.
Ann Walker, she's not here. William Parrish.
Present.
He is present.
Most of us are here.
All right, thank you very much. We have a discussion on about Blue Book Amendment, Chapter 8, 340, Article 7, Section 47, F1A and 2. I'm going to let Mark McRedmond have the floor.
One second there. I actually had a question. Scott, what section are you referring to?
A 340, Article 7, Section 47, F1A and 2. You want to come back to this? We can come back if you're not ready.
If you don't mind coming back to this.
Okay.
It's working on another.
We'll read it.
Actually, no, this is fine, I'm sorry Scott. Forgive me. I had two questions for the trustees when I was redrafting this. First issue, we had spoken about dredging and beach renourishment. Would you like it drafted so that the trustees may, if they wish, require engineering or other types of professional plans for either of them, if you wish, or should I completely exclude them?
For basic maintenance dredging, I don't think we really need an engineer's report for that.
Okay.
I don't want to make it more onerous than it has to be.
If we have the option to do it, if there's next to a bad bulkhead, then you would want it like that.
That's what I was wondering. Otherwise, I wasn't going to mention it at all.
I don't think it should be a mandatory, because some of them are simple.
It's not mandatory, but just as an option.
Is there a way that if the trustees deem it necessary?
That's language I was going to, trustees may, at their discretion.
Right.
Based on the circumstances, ask for.
Yeah, I mean, Romano Drive, I'll give you an example, when they have done the dredging there in the past and the contractor, he would leave about a 10-foot buffer between the bulkhead and the dredged area and allow it to slope down naturally. They would never dredge right up to an old bulkhead. So, giving us that option, like if you're familiar with the area and if you're doing a, say, a large dredging project at like a marina and there's a bulkhead, a residential bulkhead or another bulkhead next door, where it could potentially influence it to, you know, cause damage, I think that would give us an option over when we do the review of the permit.
Okay. That makes sense.
Have the trustees ever received an engineer's or architect's report in advance for any dredging that was going to be done?
The only trouble we really had is down in that one creek where we dredged and the guy accused us of undermining his bulkhead because he got dredged.
I don't recall that.
Probably not.
That was before you got on the board.
No, I mean.
That was down by John's area.
I, no, I think I recall something like that with the county.
It was with the county.
Right, with the county, they were saying.
Oh, no, that was at Fresh Pond.
Yes, yes, Fresh Pond issue.
Mr. Feldman's property.
Yeah, so.
Because his bulkhead was not in, really a good function.
If we had the option, we could have, you know.
But the county sent their engineer down to do a survey the next time they did the dredging, and they did the dredging specifically in the interface, they didn't take the sandbar that was next to his bulkhead. Literally, it was a property where the sandbar was holding up the bulkhead. So, they did, the county did do their.
That could save us on a case like that. So, if we had the option.
Always I'm asking, it's your property that's in the balance.
Right, yeah.
Very good.
Well, I mean, the next question is if we're going to ask an engineer to review of an application that the engineer is not originally part of, who's going to pay for that study?
Yeah, I don't have an answer for you.
I mean, because we're asking, you know, it's our property, we're asking an engineer to oversee a project that could potentially damage, you know, another person's property from our property being removed.
Right.
So, the next.
Right, I see, I see your point exactly.
Okay.
All right. And the other question was, we had talked about making the applications that include engineer architects and/or landscape architect reports not being initially in conjunction with the application for work. So, I was going to exclude what's now Section 2 from Section F1 and then add it as another section at the end that when it comes to engineering architects or landscape architects, that doesn't have to be submitted with the initial, just by the final. And is that language okay with the trustees?
Yeah, I think the question was, is how many times were they going to go to the architect and have the plans redrawn for the final draft to be approved?
Right.
I think through the whole process, getting the final draft at the end, when we're going to approve it or not approve it, would be the proper way. James, I mean, you know, you had.
It just needs to be put on a work session with the final, final plans.
Yep.
So that you guys can approve the final standard.
Right.
Okay. And the only question I have for James, I just wanted to make sure, obviously, you want every other thing to remain the same. You still want two copies of the property survey referenced in A1, photographs A3, covenants or restrictions, and any electrical permit that may be necessary. All that you still want upfront.
Correct.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Good, Mark?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, let's go to general permit applications for determination. I see the first one up is yours, trustee one or 86 Foster Avenue?
Yes. I believe the applicant's, person is here to discuss it with us.
You can sit here, wherever you're comfortable.
Do whatever you guys want to do.
I'd like to see yours.
The consultant. We just need to go over this. It's, this whole entire marina has been an ongoing project since the time I've been on the board. It's basically a man-made lagoon. We permitted bulkheads down there, travel lifts, and other, you know, structures on the bottom and some of it on the trustees' underwater lands. This particular part of it is on the man-made part of the lagoon and it's to, basically, I guess it's to make it storm resilient, the property more storm resilient after Sandy, I believe the DEC were, had looked at the property along with, you know, the Sandy relief people that were doing the reviews of these properties and made certain recommendations. So, Grant, if you wanted to give us a little bit of a.
Sure. Good morning. Good morning, everyone. Grant Reiner from Nelson Posen Board, he's on behalf of the applicant. I believe you have a set of plans that were submitted with the application. We have since revised them. I have a copy for justice work, I'm going to hand this out. The modifications to the plans are very minor. They were just more verbiage related to address comments that we received from the DEC and Army Corps.
I gave them already.
Mark, would you like one just over there?
No, thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah, so, again, you probably won't even pick up on the differences. I'll walk you through them very quickly, but the crux of the application remains exactly the same as we described in the description. So, this application is for a much-needed marina basin improvements, which include maintenance dredging of the marina basin. First of all, all this work is within the marina property itself. We're not asking to go outside of the marina property, the meets and bounds description of the survey, identify the property boundaries, and we are completely within them. That being said, we are asking for approvals to maintenance dredge the marina basin, construct bulkheads along the eastern side of the peninsula that flanks the Doug Canal on Foster's Creek, install service slips within the marina basin. There will be two slips that are going to be in addition to the existing slips that are there. And those are, I'll walk you through what those are for, and then restoration and creation of intertidal marsh areas. So, first, let's talk quickly about the bulkhead-ing. So, we'll be putting in a layer of 200 feet, 200 linear feet of typical bulkhead to an elevation of approximately six feet along the eastern shoreline of the peninsula. That's intended to hold back the falling bank, as you can see from the site photographs that were submitted with the application. James, could you pull some of those up real quick? Just page through, keep going. Yeah, that one's good right there. So, you can see the land is slumping into the basin. So, our first order objective was to hold back the land with the highest elevations, which we'll be doing with a typical bulkhead. Again, that's 200 linear feet. And, in front of that, we will be installing a low sill bulkhead to allow us to reestablish valuable intertidal marsh areas. This low sill bulkhead will allow for tidal inundation regularly, daily. It will also provide a maximum erosion control to absorb some of the wave energies as they come to the bank, and it will provide a long-term maintenance dredging for the navigation of the basin. So, having that vertical wall next to the channel of the boat traffic for the basin.
Bless you.
Bless you. Is extremely important to the viability and long-term stability of this marina basin. And finally, that low sill bulkhead will allow us to create a vibrant, protected intertidal wetland area along the shoreline. So, next, we'll talk about the intertidal wetland area. We'll be establishing 813 square feet of intertidal wetland, be planted with Spartina alterniflora between the low sill and typical bulkhead. This represents approximately a 1 to 7 mitigation ratio for the 111 square feet of vegetated intertidal marsh area that will need to be disturbed to create this project. So, there is some intertidal wetland vegetation that is there, and as you can tell, it's holding on by a thread because as the wave energies continue to move in and out of the marina, it is taking the toe of the bank with it continuously. So, it's continuing to slump into the basin and wash away the vegetation as its roots give way. So, again, the project in total represents a 1 to 7 mitigation, but objectively, the purpose is to actually maintain as much of the intertidal vegetation that's there without disturbing it whatsoever. There may be some temporary disturbances in any areas that would be temporarily disturbed for the construction activity would be revegetated in kind because there are some valuable environments there, you know, and we want to try to maintain those. So, this project is twofold. It's environmentally stable, we believe, and it is needed, much needed, perhaps required for this marina to continue to maintain its important operation. These marinas, especially the locally owned marinas, are becoming dying breed. So, this marina owner wants to try to find a way to maintain the longevity of it. So, as part of that, there is a service portion to this marina operation. The Stabellik family has long been a very hands-on marina ownership, and they do a lot of maintenance. And what they're finding is that they don't have a space to put the boats while they're waiting to maintenance them, you know, or to pull them. So, they're looking to install two service slips at the north, sorry, the southwest corner. James, can you pull up the plan, please? Actually, the plan's not. Actually, you can use that aerial that you just had, that's fine. So, look again, right where his cursor is, right about there, we're just looking to extend the existing slips that are there, creating a small, another floating dock to put two more boats in that area.
It's on page sheet 5 of the tenet you gave us.
Thank you, I don't have another copy.
If anybody wants to see it.
I don't really see that as a problem because he owns the bottom in there.
Yeah.
It's okay.
And it's, I think that's not really what we're worrying about.
Okay.
I have, but I do have a question. On the west side of the peninsula, are you going to do anything to stable the sand going back into the channel there?
So, on the west side, there's actually a mixture of frag and naturalized vegetation. There's high marsh vegetation, there's low marsh vegetation.
It's pretty stable.
It's, it's much more stable, ironically. And again, that is a shoreline that would probably be something that we might need to look at in the future, but for right now, we're trying to leave as much naturalized shoreline as possible. We are happy to work with the trustees in the future on looking at another long-term solution there, perhaps a low sill bulkhead makes sense there, too.
In maintaining the bank, embankment, and still maintaining the integrity of the grasses and the environment is, is really important, especially in, you know, west of the bridge where there's been degraded water quality. I mean, we're trying to have the best filtering system, but there are no structures on there, so it's a natural environment, which is good, too.
Right. That, in fact, you know, is a trustee water body that has been dredged by the county. And I know the trustees have a long history with that, too. So, the idea here is, you know, the more sediment we can hold back by creating a hybrid solution here with the wetland vegetation, the better will be for long-term dredging operations as well. You know, the idea is stabilizing these banks to the point that we can, keeps the material in place and doesn't put it into these channels or the basin.
Well, one of the first, you know, I would just say, low sill bulkheads that I dealt with, or the board dealt with when I first became a trustee, was the old, it's the Poncock Manor, but it used to be the old Allen's Acres. And that's just.
North of it.
It's north of it. And it, when they first did it and put the bulkhead in there, it was actually a little too low, and they raised it up one six-inch, six by six. And it's, it's a flourishing wetlands now, and it's, they did dredging in front of it, which you're looking to do on the inside, put that material there, and the wetlands are just flourishing. So, it's a, it managed to stabilize it, keep the Doug Canal deep, and also, you know, gave a great buffer between the residences there and the water. So, it worked out really well, and it's, and it's stable, and it's going to be stable there for probably 50 years because it's a vinyl and treated, not non-treated, but hardwood bulkhead, and it's worked out well.
And that's a great segue into the final portion of this project, which is the dredging. So, the marina hasn't been dredged in a little bit of time, and it's, they're recognizing that they're having some shoaling, and they're getting bigger boats. Again, this goes back to the servicing portion of it. There's not many marinas that service boats, and at least in the Hampton Bays area. So, they're taking on, you know, some bigger vessels to pull them and maintenance them. And what they're realizing is they need a solid six-foot depth at mean lower water throughout the marina. So, the project includes a dredging of roughly 2,891 cubic yards of material, and those materials will be put into the upland areas in the same location, and you can see it on the site plan, on the project plans. It's the same location that the trustees had approved for prior dredging associated with Foster's Creek that was done many years ago.
Nine years ago?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, it's a site that makes sense. You know, it's on the property and.
It looks like it's a very good project.
Yeah, I mean, overall, it's intended to keep this valuable resource operating.
You could put an Osprey pole at the end, right here.
What's that?
The Osprey pole.
If the trustees would like me to take that back to them.
I think Bill Senior would like that, if you're watching.
I will, I'll make the recommendation.
No, it's improving the water quality brings more fish and brings the birds, so.
Yep.
No, I think at large, it's a really good project, and I do remember when it was, the Coast Guard had emergency haul-out ability here, and channels shoaled and they couldn't get their boats in. But we've worked with the county, remedying the shoaling in the interface, now we're going to remedy the shoaling within the marina. It's, you know, it's, it's one of the only marinas that haul out the commercial fishing boats and, you know, keeping the maritime heritage in our town prosperous. I think it's a really good project.
He might be able to put his boat in the water, his dragger.
Maybe.
Yeah, have enough water.
Oh, I'm sorry, there was one final small piece to the project. So, on the northwest corner, there is a floating dock that currently holds, you know, the bigger commercial fishing boat when it's in. And as part of the project, now that we're going to be able to install a low sill bulkhead along that shoreline and get some dredging there, we're going to be able to move that float just slightly to the west to actually sit next to the, to the low sill bulkhead, just a few feet. And that's, that details on the plan, too. But again, everything is inside the marina, intended to keep this operation moving and advancing with the times. So, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Let's take some time to look at it, I guess.
Sure. And you guys know how to get me if you have any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Nice presentation.
You're welcome.
One other thing, if there are going to be any electrical upgrades, you have to go through the town building to get certified for all the electrical on the docks. We've been working with our new dock inspector, George Finder, and it's been coming up with some of the electrical inspections that he's done on marinas and stuff like that. We want to make sure that they have all the underwriters and all the proper certificates.
That makes sense. I will advise him of that, too.
Thank you.
We're going to hold this for stamp plans?
Yeah, of course.
What's that?
Well, no, it's on hold, it's not advancing now.
It's not advancing, but we're going to need stamp plans once it does advance.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll get working on your stamp plans, like, you know.
Okay.
We will, thank you.
Electrical stuff, thanks. All right, so the next one you have is Jeffrey Dorf at 15 Carmel Road, Hampton Base. Modification for DKR Shores.
Yes.
I see Gina is here. Hello, how are you?
Gina, how are you doing today?
How are you? Happy holidays.
I'm too.
So, I'm here to ask to modify currently approved dock to be 20-foot shorter because court of engineers pulled up an aerial that there was eelgrass in the area or sap beds, which we know there aren't, but their aerials show it. So, they said shorten it 20 feet and you have a deal. Okay, I had all the other permits.
There are eelgrass beds, but.
They're not, right, yeah.
The docks are just in shore them along the stretch.
Yeah, I know.
You know, I was actually there several times at low tide during the fall season when the water was clear, and eelgrass beds are, you know, 100 or so yards offshore that's a little bit deeper.
I can't hear you.
And it would be consistent with the several docks that are along there now. No floats are needed, basically just a dock with a tidal filings and, you know, ladder at the end for safety. And depending where the dock is going to be sited, coming off the bulkhead, if the bulkhead is very high, it can either be, you know, high up so people can walk under the dock, or if it's going to be lower down, you're going to need to put access steps back and forth.
I had the access steps. We're on the application already.
Yep.
Just in case.
Yeah, I want to make sure for the public's ability to walk up and down the beach that it's put in there. Like I said, you know, we approved it as it was originally, but shortening it up is just going to, you know, pretty much have the same amount of water at high tide there and low tide, so it's going to be consistent always approved in the area before.
Good.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Do we have stamp plans? No. We just need stamp, stamp plans, so we're going to hold it.
Okay, I'll have them to you.
Of course.
No problem, thanks.
Thank you. And we've got trustee Parrish has Joseph Carney, 9, Appicook Point Lane in West Hampton, a modification and a renewal.
Anyone here from First Coastal?
You want to wait for First Coastal?
Yes. Maybe we have to because there's some questions.
So, that's, that's on hold then for now. Then you have Stephen F. Harwin, 7, Bay Meadow Lane in West Hampton, LI permits.
7 Bay Meadow Lane.
Anybody here for LI permits?
That's for an application for maintenance dredging. This is seeking a 10-year permit, so it's.
We don't give 10-year permits.
We don't give 10-year permits. And there's no, no information on the application as to where the spoils are going to go.
Is there any, has there been any sediment sampling done in the area as far as grain size and any DOCs in it? Just curious.
It wasn't submitted to us, so I'm assuming they're going to move it offsite. Because.
Maybe.
There's not much information on the, in the folder.
So, we should probably have the consultant here to.
This has to go on hold, and I would suggest we make a phone call and have him come in and explain the process and what we do and what we don't do, so I would, I would put that on hold.
Yeah, I was wondering if it had been previously dredged, though.
Yeah. Put that on hold for further.
It's further, we'll go on Waterfell now.
Yeah, let's go on.
Linaya is on her way up.
Wait, here comes.
Here comes Billy Mack.
Here comes Billy Mack.
Your timing is impeccable.
No, you're right on time.
Oh, good, all right.
Not really, you're late.
But whatever, trying to be, you don't have any paperwork?
Would you like to come up here and sign in and introduce yourself?
Sign in.
Hi guys, Billy Mack, First Coastal. Have a nice weekend. I think we're talking about the.
9 Appicook Point Lane in West Hampton, modification and renewal.
This is a renewal of a dredge project that we got mostly done last year up to the window of the dredging time. And all the dredge material is being dredged. It's opening up the little creek that heads up into Tanner's Neck. So, that spot has been historically choked over.
The spills?
Yeah, the spills go on the Carney property.
Okay.
Which is that last Medina piece, which is the east, western part of that. We did the bulkhead and the walkway, which was part of the original permit, and that was inspected and fine. We never got to finish the, all of the dredging. We did about 80% of it, which was great, but the one part that we need to get is just the ends of the part that was permitted to do.
And you're supervising it?
Yep. Yeah, I'll be there until the time. Yeah, and it's, it's pretty simple, I think there's only 300 yards left.
Okay.
Out of the.
One day.
It's, well, it's probably a couple days, just because it's, we have to work with the tides.
Using a log stick or?
Yeah, excavator and.
You want it from the beach?
Yeah, we'll have a barge.
Barge.
Yeah.
There's a question, what about the, the walkway and the buffer?
The walkway was completed and inspected, as was the bulkhead. So, everything upland was done. The only thing we're going to do is add that extra 300 cubic yards into that disposal site that was designated on the plan, which is just landworth of the bulkhead.
And it was on the original permit, there was approximately 30 feet, excuse me, planned 500 square feet of Spartina.
That was planted, yeah.
That was done. What was, what was the outstanding on that?
Yeah, so, it's all confusing. There's two applications on for this property. The one is the modification and renewal, which is the bulkhead. So, you're, you're modifying to take off the dredging and apply the dredging to a separate permit.
To a new permit.
So that they can close out the bulkhead permit. The bulkhead permit, however, left off the description of the buffer. So, now the modification shows, I'll pull it up, so you guys can look at it.
So, they have to pay for a new permit there?
Yeah.
It doesn't have the description of the buffer on here.
Okay, because the bulkhead, okay, well, we can attach that to the dredging if you want.
That's up to you guys whether you want it on the, I mean, it's, it's kind of a weird situation because you're dredging, you're going to put the spoil behind the bulkhead, right? So, you can't do the.
Buffer till.
Buffer till after the dredging.
Yeah.
However, if you don't close out the dredging permit and say that you're not going to do the dredging, then you don't have to. the dredging, then you don't have to do the buffer. But you guys want the buffer usually for the bulkhead. So it's kind of a weird
Buffer should remain on the bulkhead.
Yeah, if you look at the site plan, the actual spartina section is not where we're replacing the dredge spoil. So that was done.
Oh, so you're not going to have any issues with the judgment?
Yeah, that's a completely different location.
You're not going to plant over the dredge spoil?
No, we're not even, that's, it's a, it's a little beachy spot.
Okay.
That was on the western side of the canal that Ann had asked us to include as kind of, you know, a mitigating factor, I guess.
Is this, is this all in the plans and the permit?
What's that?
What are you saying?
Yeah.
Clear? That, because that would clear things up.
Sure.
Stated properly and
Yeah.
Which plans do you want?
Try the 19, sure. So you see that little spot right there? It says, uh, where is that? I can't remember.
I can't read any of that.
Yeah, um, you know, it's to the right, to the vegetation, vegetation. Yeah, it's not on that. Maybe it's just a description. I know that Kristen in our office, there it is right there, that's been done.
That little section.
So?
So everything, um, the walkway was done, bulkhead was done.
So, okay, so what buffer's going against the bulkhead?
Right now, it's, um
So the original, I'll pull up to the original.
Yeah, it's, it's non, uh
Oh, jeez.
It's native or non, nothing, you know, sand or native. Right now it's sand with a mix of native.
So you're saying the plant 500 square feet area?
That's correct.
Is, is already done?
Is done. Yeah, with the spartina on the floor. Because the spartina wouldn't survive around the bulkhead.
So that's, that's what was left off of the new application to modify and renew the bulkhead in the description. So that would also be modified. So I don't know if you want to leave that in because it's already been done. It should, it should be on the permit so that when it's inspected completely
Yeah.
They see that it's there.
Yeah, I missed the difficult part because we do, yes, indeed, we're asked to separate the permits from the bulkhead to the dredging. The bulkhead was completed, then included the walkway, the spartina.
Why do you want to separate it? Because another six months it'll be done. You're going to do the dredging.
Oh, yeah, we don't, we were requested to do it on, from your office.
Were you requested?
So because the bulkhead was inspected and completed.
Well, they went, they, you submitted a completion. George went out there and
George inspected it and wasn't finished.
Yeah. Right. So I don't know how
If you, or you just wait and hold it off until you get your certificate from us, until the job is completely done.
I'm happy to do it either. Whatever is best for you guys, sure.
That'd be the cleanest way.
I thought it expires very soon.
That's why you, we need, you know, renewers and
It's not done. It's not totally done on the permit. That's why we had to do four extra renewals so that you could, you know, because you get jammed up.
Especially on a project like this.
Right, because it takes time.
It already expired. It expired in September. That's why we're
So you, so it has to be a new application then?
Yeah.
Which is why we separated the applications.
So that they, we close out the bulkhead work, but still have time to do the dredging.
Yeah, we did put the request in before the expiration date.
Mark, what do you say? Clean?
Yeah, I, I think if, you know, procedurally, if James is okay, we could break it up like that. You know, the trustees want to insist that it all be done at once. That's fine, but
I mean, I think our, my only issue is just making sure that that buffer is, is done
Correct.
correctly and, and with whatever permit you guys decide on, whether it's the bulkhead permit, so that when George goes out to inspect the bulkhead, he's not looking for a buffer because it's now on the dredging permit or vice versa.
The buffer should stay with the bulkhead.
But if it's already, right, and if it's already done, like you said, then when he goes out there, all he's inspecting is that buffer and the bulkhead and the plans, then he won't have a problem with it.
Right.
But if it's not there, then he's going to hold it up for the, for that buffer.
Sure. So he went and inspected, I can't remember if I met him there or not, to tell you the truth, but he inspected the walkway, the bulkhead, and, and I believe the buffer. But the dredging, I told him, was not complete and we're going to require, request a
It is inspection sheet. It says, bulkhead 192 feet, bulkhead visually, and wind cat walk four pictures. Electrical needs to be finished.
All right, which is separate.
Separate.
He doesn't mention the buffer?
He doesn't mention the buffer on here.
Okay. If you want to include the buffer up, I, I, you know, got to do it any way you guys want.
Trustee Parrish.
If you're going to include it on the bulkhead, then just make sure you have it, the buffer in before he goes out to do the inspection.
The final inspection of the whole project.
Yeah, yeah.
And then the dredging, the dredging will be, now be a separate permit so that you can close out the bulkhead and the, and the walkway and the buffer.
Okay.
Get a compliance to that, come in for when the dredging's completed for the separate
Right. That's probably the best way. And then don't notify, don't call him in until it's all
Done.
That way he doesn't
Yeah.
give us an incomplete notice.
Okay.
Make it easy on everybody.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
New permit application is just to reclaim approximately 604 cubic yards of bay bottom material from the southwestern area of the property and deposit landwork of reconstructed bulkhead.
That's for the dredging.
Right.
Yeah. That's all it says, that's all it says on the new permit application.
Right. But you're going to have, you're going to add back that buffer to the bulkhead modification renewal permit application.
Uh, so you want us to renew the bulkhead application?
You already, you already are. You already have an application in.
Right, just add
The only thing is you don't have that buffer language on it, like you did on the original permit.
Add the buffer onto that, that way it's clean.
Yeah.
Then get it all done, then notify us. George will go out, right? Then you'll get the certificate of compliance.
For the whole project.
Whole project holistically done.
Okay. What can you guys move forward? What do you need to move forward?
We, we just need probably a new cover sheet, description of that buffer being part of that modification.
On the bulkhead part?
On the bulkhead part.
Right. And are we co, okay to move forward on the dredging application, which I know is separate?
I believe so, yeah. Okay. You guys see any
Because that's the priority because we have a deadline.
I think that's fine. Yeah, that's fine. I just think we want to eliminate this confusion on
Sure.
and make it easier on the compliance end of it for everybody.
Yeah, my only difficulty is that to get that, the, that 500 square foot of spartina added to the plans, we have to get the engineer to re-certify those plans for the bulkhead side, which is not as critical as the dredging side. So if we could move the, at least the dredge project forward soon.
Well, you have two separate applications. Yeah, I think it's already separated, right?
It is separated. So that's, that one's ready.
Right. So I think that that should work for everybody, right? He just read the language, I think.
Yeah.
Trustee Parrish did.
Yeah, which is just the dredging.
Right, so
That's fine.
Let that roll and then on the other one amend, update.
Include that little section of spartina.
Right, that's what we want to do.
Yeah, so update that, update the plans, stake the plans, bring them in, we'll put it on for the next work session and get it
Then it's, then it's all clean.
Okay.
Get it all done, then request a certificate of inspection, whatever.
Okay. Do permits, go ahead.
Yeah, because that's what you got on here.
Yeah, dynamite. Okay. I'm good for that.
All fits.
Thank you. Thank you.
So we're advancing the dredging one, which is the second nine Appicook Point.
And I'll try to get you those plans
We're holding the modification.
I mean, I could try, I could, there's a chance I can get them before Wednesday.
I mean, you're not going to do that project then now anyway.
Exactly. It doesn't matter.
So let's not, let's not go crazy. Let's just hold it. Do the right thing. Let's do it the right way. Okay? The dredging, we're good.
Fantastic.
Okay?
Thank you guys very much.
All right. So, so that's pretty much all you have now, right?
That's it. I don't know.
Can I help you, ma'am? Hello?
Ma'am.
Are you here for a specific application?
I'm here with Peter Reese.
Oh, you are? Okay.
For 10:30.
Yeah, right, okay. All right, just making sure.
Okay.
We didn't miss something. Okay. Lenaya Piazza, why don't you come on up and
Good morning.
We can have a waterfall discussion.
All right, take care, Bill.
So you have a few stragglers here.
Yes.
And I'm still getting phone calls and emails.
Yes.
So
So first up, we have Charles Decker and Justin Schering, permit number 53. And this is in your area, Scott. We have had no correspondence with them at all, have not heard from them. They, for this whole permit, there's been zero NOVs, zero late renewals. The one non-renewal is for this current
Right, yeah. It's out of character, so I'd like to give them a call because people are reaching out to me now, so.
Okay.
We sent the, the phone numbers around to each of the trustees in the area. Did you guys make those calls?
Yeah, yeah, we've been kind of busy, so I, I got some more calls to make, so.
Okay.
Just want to make sure, I just want to make sure, just hold on to that.
Okay, so we'll hold?
Yeah. Because I, I just got an email and I know Jessica did. I got CC'd on an email from somebody else today, so.
Okay.
Yeah, hold on to that.
All right, so we'll hold that one. And next, we're going to be moving on to Bill Pell's area, and we're going to start with Mark Parrish. We did receive an email from Mark Parrish saying that he does not wish to renew his spot, and he said to please forward to the trustees.
Okay, so that goes to the
Waitlist?
Waitlist.
Yes. So we're going to advance that one?
Advance it to the waitlist.
Thank you for that. So the waitlist gets down one less.
It's another spot for next year.
Yes.
All right. And next we have, sorry, Mecko Nico, I'm sorry, A. Muhar Movic.
Robic.
Anything's a problem with that?
Yeah, I was having, I was a rough time.
Yes.
I'm so sorry, sir. It's permit number 227. We've had no correspondence with him about his late renewal. He had a late renewal in 2020, he had a late renewal in 2021, and then a non-renewal this year for 2022.
That's, that's Dr. Mac.
Yeah, that's, that's, this is the third time.
Yes.
This is his last time. We'll make one phone call to him.
Right.
And if he doesn't do, if he does it next year, he loses his spot.
Right, so let's, let's call and have a frank conversation with him. I know in those earlier years, he was battling, you know, the COVID situation with his patients and
I'll, I'll give him a call.
Okay.
So we're holding this one?
Hold that one.
Yeah, hold that one. And can you send me his phone number again, please?
Of course, sure.
Thank you. I'll call him tonight.
No problem. All right, moving on to Bill Parrish's area. The first permit we have here is for Glenn S. Bullock. I'm going to say that I recommend we should hold this application because we did receive an email this morning from him, basically asking if he could have a, another chance to renew his spot. Would you like me to read the email out?
You don't have to.
Okay.
Unless trustee Parrish wants it, I'm satisfied with that.
Would you like to read it?
Yeah, let's take it. Got it.
So we have a bit of work that we have to do to get these stragglers in
Yes.
because emails are still coming in, so I don't want to, it's a time-tested tradition, these folks with the waterfall, and I respect that. I really want to make sure before we take somebody's spot away from them.
So would you like to hold this as well?
Yes, please.
Okay. All right. And then next we have Daniel Sullivan, permit number 272. We've had no correspondence with him. We have not heard from him. There have been no NOVs for this blind and zero late renewals. This would be his first strike for a non-renewal for this current hunting season.
Trustee Parrish?
Yeah, let's give him a call too. We'll hold that.
Okay.
All right, so everyone's got some calls to make. We'll be getting back to you ASAP.
Thank you.
Just send me his number as well.
Sure. I'm going to go ahead and reply to the email I previously, previously sent, pardon me, and remove who we will not be needing to contact and get those numbers to
Thank you so much.
Awesome.
Is there anything else that has to be on for the public work session? We have one more? We have one more?
We have a walk-on discussion about Interscience?
Yes, that's the one. All right, so this is a
We would like to hire Interscience and MAP also Fox to work on their plans, permit for Fish Cove Bridge area dredging.
Right, so, so we've got three projects cooking with them now, right? The Boat Ramp project.
The Boat Ramp, which is really important
Fresh Pond.
in Hampton Bays, that area.
Ed, maybe we could just talk about that a little bit?
Yeah.
Because people are very interested about that.
Yes.
About what, how we have to do the angles and stuff like that.
Yeah. Had a conversation with Interscience about two weeks ago. We had asked them initially just to do the surveys of the property. They recommended that we do the survey of the bathroom metric, the underwater lands. So basically, so they can get the pitch of the angle, pitch angle of the ramps proper, so they can easily load in on offload boats. If they're too steep, it's very difficult to back down. If it's too not steep enough, then boat doesn't come up the trailer. So after a conversation with trustee Pell and Jim Walker at Interscience, we're going to have Fox surveying, do both the land and the water so that we get the proper pitch and have the ramps situated properly on the properties.
Which, which is very important because like Ed was saying, if we get the wrong pitch, we spent all this money improving these ramps in Hampton Bays, when you, when a free holder goes and puts their boat in and it can't go in or a bayman can't, tries to do it and they get stuck, you could only use the ramp at high tide, then the ramp's not really
It's not functional.
Not functional if you can't use it at all tides.
And to your point, the highway department's been helping us out.
Yes.
On Bay Crest in West Hampton.
Oh, yeah. The highways department's been, works very well with us.
Yes, they helped us out again, getting
Yes.
just exactly what you said, and I think we're going to make some further adjustments there to get the angles just right.
Right. So that's why it's important. If we go too fast, we'll make a mistake. You know, people don't understand why it takes a long time. This is why it takes a long time.
So we'll, I think we're all in agreement. We'll have to get the proper resolutions going on for this. I mean, we can't do it at the work session, but it's something that the whole board
Yes.
And we also did a lot of research on these ramps. They're, they're not the traditional asphalt ramps. They're, they're precast cement ramps that are made offsite and transported to the areas where they'll be placed in. And during COVID, there was a, basically almost a year waiting list for these slabs to be delivered. So we have used them on, at Bay Crest, which were very successful, and we plan on using them at the other three locations.
Because it opens up, because a lot of, you know, a lot of people can't afford it or, can't afford or even find a slip out of local marina to keep their boat at. he can't afford or even find a slip out of local marina to keep their boat at.
And you had just done the launching ramp at, uh, Bay Avenue in East Rock.
Yeah.
Very similar project.
Bay Crest, right?
Yep.
So what else have we got?